So we're gonna reconvene and welcome you all to the Pedelema City Schools regular board meeting. And I'm gonna move right on to item E, which will be the adoption. Oh wait, before I move on, I have one thing to do.
I have a pledge that I want to do.
And I want Steve Bullman to do it. Because it's gonna be his last one. Ready? Begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let the record reflect he did it flawlessly. And his enthusiasm. So now I'll move to the adoption approval of agenda. Any discussion? Any changes? All in favor? Item F, approval of the minutes. F1, approval of the minutes of June 9th, 2015. Any discussion, changes, edits? Questions? All in favor? I'll move on to F2, approval of the minutes of June 16th, 2015. Any edits, suggested changes? Everybody okay with it? All in favor? Now we'll go to G, special recognitions, reports, and presentations. G1, Ray Poole, our interim chief business official, will bring us up to date on the 2015-16 budget.
I do like the mood lighting.
There, that's fine, thank you. I forgot to turn the phones.
That hasn't been turned on yet.
Is it not plugged in?
Do you have a button on the side or not?
Steve, you wanna go ahead and fix something for the last time?
Laurie can. It's a button on the side.
Oh, maybe it won't, hope it died.
You're hoping it does.
Yeah.
What is this?
Look it in.
Oh, that probably would be what helped.
Three people, to turn on a projector in BCS.
Right into the 20%.
Yeah, she wanted to replace it in the risse.
Oh, there's a light on there.
Well, if they outsource this room today to people who didn't know what they were doing.
Well, there's no such thing in this.
I think so.
There it is. We have the hard cut of yours, we need a minute. Okay, do you want to move forward?
Well, this is, this is.
That's okay, I got it out.
Okay, so I felt like I was being redundant. It's like four presentations in a month or something.
It's a mistake.
With another eleven planned according to this.
Huh?
There's eleven more planned.
So I just wanted to go over the significant changes since the governor's budget in January. The funding for LCSF was significantly increased by an additional 2.1 billion to 6.1 billion. Increasing the 15-16 gap funding from 32.1% to 53.08%. The one thing to keep in mind, I did a kind of a sketch calculation and we're at 86% full implementation. We only have 14% more to drop. So when they talk about the gap funding, we have 14% to get to our target. And if they do another 53.08% in the following year, it's only gonna be 53% of the gap. So 53% of 14%.
So that's good, though, that would be good.
It's good, but it seems like we're closer to the target than our revenues appear.
You were hoping revenues were a lot lower than we got.
Yeah, it would be nice if we were only at 75%, because then we still got that 25% gap. One-time mandate repayments are increased to a total of $3.5 billion. Adult education, the May revise maintains the $500 million to establish the adult education block grant program. COLA was adjusted, the COLA is categorical programs outside of LCSF, and that was reduced to 1.02%. And one-time prop 98 funding for QEIA transition, which is good news that we're gonna get sort of the entire thing in 15-16.
Do we know what we're getting?
Batteries done?
So that's one right there on the side there?
Let's go quickly.
Yeah, and then plug it into the, so how is there?
QEIA was at, I believe, 214,000. So we'll get 217.
That's great, because we thought we were getting nothing.
QEIA has several new teachers, so that should fund maybe 1.4 teachers there.
Oh, question. I heard that the gap funding was gonna be reduced to 1. something or 200%.
It's reduced slightly under the adopted budget.
Yeah, see, that's, that was my ending, oh, I'm sorry. You know, it, the.
I'll let you finish.
We get a common message, I'm sure you get it too, and they always caution that may revise is may revise. Everything changes, even throughout 15-16. They're gonna change that gap 70% up and down all day long. This is kind of a benchmark here, and whether we go up and down from here is another thing. So what was included in the adopted budget? PFT settlement, which is 2% on and 2% off in 15-16. And then there's the ongoing, so the ongoing is 4.5%. We gave them 2.5 last this year. So next year, we're giving them another 2%, which means 4.5 was ongoing. And the two paid days has also been added to PFT calendars in 15-16. And the 25% that was actually added in the current. The South County Consortium has also been added to the adopted budget, and it's actually a wash because the participating districts are contributing their portion of the cost. So the expenses went up by 3.1 million, and the revenues also went up by 3.1 million. Because we're gonna get that revenue, not only from ourselves, most of it from ourselves, but the participating districts that are gonna contribute for the special program. Pedalum accelerated charter has also been added to the budget beginning in 15-16. The Pedalum pioneers have also, I've budgeted for the release period and stipend. And the QEIA funding that we just talked about, 50% has been included in, 50% of 1450 has been included in the 15-16 budget. And also the one-time mandated cost allocation of $601 per ADA. And another thing to keep in mind, at second interim, the governor had already approximated, I think it was 160 or 180?
$160.
So the $601 is not brand new. We already had 180 in the budget for next year. What is not included in the adopted budget is any potential negotiation increases for CSEA, KLA, and the confidential bargaining units. As you know, PFT is the only one that settled for 50-16. The good news is the adult ed block grant means that that transfer that you've seen for years, we transfer $643,000 every year from the general fund to adult ed fund. That will go away. They're not gonna need it anymore because they're getting a block grant.
And it covers that whole amount that they need?
I'm sorry?
It covers the full enough they need to buy their program?
Yeah. So it'll be in 15-16, a savings of, will have increased general fund revenue of 643,000. And then the next year, and the next year, so that's really good news.
There's a block grant, state grant?
Yes.
Adult ed, yeah.
I'm not certain if it's gonna be on or not.
It's in for now.
It's in for, it's in for 15-16.
What's not in here also is the mandated block grant. There's two things that the governor's been giving us. It's the one-time money, is mandated cost allocation, and then there's the other one, the mandated block grant. That is, I believe we're getting like $56 for 9 through 12 per ADA. And I think it was like $28 for K8, something like that, which amounts to approximately 305,000. That was not put into the budget. So that will be, as soon as the system is open to do budget transfers, I will budget that in. Oh geez, I thought I did better with this. Can we read that?
Thank you for highlighting Steve.
So Steve was wanting me to take this out because he was very confused. And I think the format is confusing. This is not a multi-projector like I normally show you. This is showing you the adjustments to the revenue and expenses since second interim. So for example, this total income line right here, it means since second interim, the current year revenues have gone down 13,000. And then in the current year, the total expenses since second interim has gone up 490,000, and that's mainly due to special ed. You're seeing really large increases in these revenue numbers here, mostly due to the consortium. Like I said, it's over $3 million, so we're adding on the revenue side and the expense.
And then in 15-16, the addition above that is the approximately $4 million in one-time funds.
So basically down here is the net effect since second interim of the new information on the budget.
And the salary increase, the salary increase now, it calculates all years out, including the 15-16 for certificated generates the most significant change to any balance.
And the negative 1 million dollars for 16-17? And they change in revenues of, expenses?
Yes.
Because what's reflected in that?
Was that based on, that maybe that 1 million is there?
Well, they, now we have the certificated settlement. That's the largest part of it.
I thought that was 15-16.
Well, but it's on the ongoing portion of it.
That's 4.5%.
And as you know, in the current year, the way we are required by SACS to do budgeting, everything is assumed spent out. And none of, you know, we have budgets that will be carried over till next year. So you're gonna see a huge difference in the any balance. And this is where the any balance trends, which was already included in your budget book. But this is mainly just showing you again what our any balance trend is. And like I said, this figure down here for the current year, we are setting up payables. The closing process takes us months. The accounts payable will receive invoices and determine whether the goods were received in the current year or not. If they weren't, we set them up, if they were, we set them up as payables. If they weren't, then we pay them the new year out of new money. So a lot of that needs to be determined, and that is what factors into the any balance for the current year.
What is this less reserves than 53?
That's the restricted money for companies.
That's a really low.
That's not budgeted, that's not in the budget about it.
Oh, okay. It's, okay, because it's kind of a confusing number, because it's usually a bigger number than shows.
But I think the trend is towards less restricted money and more unrestricted money. Because we have so much less categorical programs.
No, no, I understand that, but I meant like the economic conservative. Where is that shown there?
That?
It's just not in there.
Oh, yes, it is there.
So the 3% is not in, if you're looking at the 10 million, those numbers don't add up to 10.
Right.
10 million.
It's just, that's why it's kind of confusing. I did leave it out, we're just missing that one line.
The reserve rate.
What lines up there?
The 3%.
It just makes the numbers not work.
Yeah, I think it's, yeah.
I think that's all that's missing, yeah.
Because if you take the any fund balance, and you left the reserves unappropriated, what you're missing is the 3% reserve rate, like in conservative.
Yeah, it's missing right here or right there.
The numbers are right.
The numbers are right.
There's just one line up.
Yeah, the bottom line is correct.
Yeah, the unappropriated is correct, yeah.
So in summary, the governor's May revise increases funding to education in 15-16, but a substantial amount of that is one-time funding. And I took this quote from the common message that business managers all get from the county office. And they just wanna caution you that every district has different amounts of revenue. And we all have our own risk factors, and I believe one of ours is our declining enrollment. But that is a huge factor in the future and the out years because maintaining our enrollment or increasing even would definitely hugely affect the out years. And as you can see in 17-18, it's not looking real pretty.
I have some questions, but you'll probably wanna dig into your.
My stuff?
Yeah. If you want to, I'll probably find. Page 11 of 108.
This is in the, in your packet?
Yeah.
Yeah, this is on the adopted budget.
What section is it?
This is the assigned ending balance, fund balance sheet.
Oh, I did mention there's a new requirement at a county office. There's the page that's right after the certification page. It's a new page where it asks you to justify the fund balance over the 3%.
And this, that's this page?
Right.
She's asking about.
Yeah, and I just had a couple of questions about the assigned. The 2% set aside for the additional PFT increase, that's the one-time money that we're setting aside so that we can do the off schedule? So at page 11, that fund balance somewhere? Sure.
Set aside for additional 2% PFT increases, the 2% next year, the one-time money?
Yeah, is that what that is? And then the charter school ending fund balances? What's that?
That is, all the charter schools, we have, what, five of them now? They each have their own any fund balance. And this was a recommendation actually, exactly from the county office, is that we take that out of our general fund fund balance.
Oh, I see.
You have to have their own in the fund balance. So when you look at the general.
I see, okay. All right, and then the common corriged instructional materials, set aside? Okay, cool. And then I have more, sorry. Page 19. So there was a little bit of change in the gap that the legislature is gonna approve that. It didn't seem like it was significant. Did you have any concern about that? The from 53 to 51%? And then the one-time funds?
I don't, I don't think that it's gonna be substantial.
Okay.
And those are the changes that you're supposed to make within 90, within 45 days of adoption?
Right.
Once the state adopts it, signed by the governor? Then you have.
Shouldn't have a huge impact?
Yeah.
Okay. Page 22. There was a not met that didn't have an explanation, so I just wanted to, it's probably a typo.
Is that the criteria standard?
Yeah. On the deficit spending standard. So I just wanted to point that, it's probably just a typo, a mist, I just wanted to point that out.
But the standard is met if you look down below. You just have one not met?
Right.
Doesn't mean the standard's not met.
Okay, that's what I was wondering.
Right.
You don't have to answer.
No, standard is met if unrestricted.
In the SACS software, Mary, I actually missed one. And when I tried to do the technical reviews, it actually kicked it out as a fatal error when you miss one that you have to explain that you didn't explain.
Now it doesn't require an explanation because you have to miss two out of three or only miss one out of three.
Okay, good. It's not a fatal error, that sounds terrible, is it? And then on page 33, it says there's, it looks like there's an increase of 24 certificated teachers. Is that right?
Yeah, COLA, that's the.
For the special ed. Yep, okay, I just wanted to make sure that that's, I thought that's what it was, but I wanted to make sure, like, wow. And then page 35, what's the cost of a 1% increase for CSEA?
It's on that page.
It is?
I showed it to, because I reviewed and came up with, it's on that page or another page.
What page are you at?
I'm on 33, or supposed to be on 33.
124,000, step of, cost of, no, it's cost of step and column. But I did, because I went to this document and shared with Debbie what it was, so I know it's in here.
Okay.
Does it, the criteria standards has its own number at the bottom? What number does that say?
Oh, okay, so let me find it.
So 1% for management's 44,000, 1% for classified is, and there's 125,000 change.
124 in 15-16. No, I'm sorry, that's the, step and column.
Yeah, I saw it in here.
You know, I don't think that we had to put that because it wasn't a part of the settlement.
If you don't settle.
If you've already settled, then they don't require that calculation.
Right, that could be. But you're not settled for 15-16.
Right.
So then you do. Anyway, I was just curious, so you could let me know that later, that's fine.
I think it was in the 80, 1200. The 1% cost.
All right. And then my last question was, it looks like that we're gonna get some gateway and accelerated charters. We have concentration, that's because they have a higher percentage of unduplicated.
I actually believe Gateway gets a small amount.
Okay, because I was surprised to see that, that was kind of.
And it's a possibility for accelerated charter too, if they're gonna exceed 50%.
We'll know at season, right?
Yeah, okay. Okay, well, I just thought that was kind of exciting. I couldn't have it a little. Anyway, that was my question.
Other questions?
I mean, I don't know, Ray mentioned enrollment, declining enrollment. How is enrollment looking for next year? Things change a lot.
Actually, it's a page in here too.
We show a decline of about 100 and something, I think, for next year based on stopping meetings. And then the following year, we show tapering off.
Tapering, is that not 100 for next year is in addition to what we lost this year, right?
Yeah.
I mean, if we're wrong, that'd be great, but 111 is what we're showing next year.
Is it secondary elementary mostly?
It's spread out. I actually think secondary is holding its own better than elementary is.
So right now, we have a decline of 111 and.
We have a small gap.
Then we have 17 increase in 16-17 and losing 1. So basically going flat after 15-16.
What was this year's loss?
This year's was 195.
I thought it was almost 200.
Based on budget, you know, it wasn't actual, you have to remember how adopted was budgeted a year ago. And we lost 195 budget.
Because we had projected an increase.
Right.
I mean, if we hadn't projected an increase, we'd truly lose 195 students. We lost 195 when we prepared.
How many do you think we actually lost?
We're projecting a growth of, trying to remember the number we're using earlier. I think we lost, I thought it was like 34, I don't know why that number's 600. Yeah, we're projecting growth of 34, so we lost probably 160 roughly. 160, 161, yeah, it's a similar number.
I think a lot of it has to do with the price of houses in town.
Yeah, if you look at, because we've lost low-income students.
Well, then you get the sort of the multiplier effect of losing students means you then lose additional funding for students.
Correct, we lose more dollars when we lose low-income.
Any other questions? Okay, thanks, Ray.
Thank you.
And then I'm going to, it's not on here, but it should have been on here. See, do we have any comments from the public? So we don't have any carbs or any comments from the public?
Yeah, comments from the public with item, well, that's B, you write that down.
No, no, I know where it's supposed to be, it's supposed to be between G and H, but I'm asking because I want to make sure the public gets to speak, yeah. All right, so there's no public comments, so we'll move on to report on activities and correspondence of school board members. Anybody have anything to share, Mary?
I have some correspondence I'd like to read.
Okay.
I have a letter that says, Dear Pedaluma City School Board Members, I'm writing this letter in recognition of Steve Bullman for his years of service to the students and staff of the Pedaluma City Schools. As the former principal of Pedaluma High School and having worked with Steve from 2001 to 2007, I've always known him to be an advocate for what's best for all students and a real stand-up guy. Thank you, Steve, for your years of service to Pedaluma, and best regards, Mike Simpson.
Retired superintendent.
Takes one to know one. Says, I'll see you at Rooster Run. Thursday morning.
The difference is I'll be playing golf and you'll be running around.
Sherry, any activities? Finished up your book? Troy, any activities? TV?
Quite the seventh year.
Oh, we were here last week.
How much happened last week?
Yeah, Steve, your final act was the cramace of four months.
Yeah.
He just told you to miss out.
There is a 30th, and you have, there's nothing scheduled yet for 30th, that's another Tuesday.
We could take a something, can't we?
Another budget, another budget.
All right, so we'll move on to, hi, agenda approval of consent, agenda by consolidated motion. All in favor?
Aye.
So now we're going down to act items, J1, administration human resources, J1-1, employment. Mr. Ron, you wanna, first we have to have.
Second.
Okay, Ron, why don't you go ahead and discuss?
All right, so I have someone to introduce. Michael Taylor. Come on up, Michael. Joining us as the new principal intern at McKinley. And he comes to us most directly from Kentville School District where he was a teacher. He has already been. He has to look at the camera. He's already been involved in, I know the elementary principals all met, and although he hasn't officially started, he was part of that. And he's been working with Matthew to get ready for next year, and I think everybody's really excited about the opportunities moving forward, so. Yes, Michael, welcome to join us. I don't know if you would like to say anything, but you don't have to, but there's your board.
I don't know if you would like to say anything, but you don't have to, it's, but there's your board, and, hi.
Well, thanks for having me, I'm just excited to be here, and it's already been a blast working with the eight other principals and Jane last Monday, filling up our calendar and just looking forward to the good things we're gonna do with kids, so it's exciting, very exciting.
So I wanted to share, because what Michael said, that he first found out about Pedaluma at Q Conference, Computer Using Educators, and a couple of local tech conferences where he ran into some of our folks and heard about the exciting things we're doing here, so. He gets to be part of that, so, welcome.
Thanks.
Yeah, I appreciate y'all very much.
Well, any other discussion up here?
Well, no.
Call in favor?
Aye.
Welcome.
Okay.
It's official.
All right.
We have another principal intern.
Yes, we do, he is not available tonight, so I'm sure somebody else will have to introduce him.
So you are already our favorite. You're our favorite principal for now. Yours to lose.
Yes, I forgot, it's quite, quite a.
Everybody's shippin' ship.
Yep.
Well, it's good, the last thing I did was set a positive.
That's right.
It's not always what I do.
That's right, my gosh. Okay.
Okay, so moving right along, J point two, business services, purchase orders.
Sorry. Take another.
Any discussion? Call in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
J two-two, list of expenditures. Any discussion? Call in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Do I have to recuse myself?
You're recusing. Okay. So four oh one, right?
Yeah.
Okay. J point two-three, resolution fourteen fifteen dash four-four of the Board of Education of the Pedaluma City Elementary and Pedaluma Joint Union High School Districts to authorize designated personnel to sign contract and agreement documents for fiscal year two thousand and fifteen, sixteen.
Seven.
Discussion?
Just the fact that it's gonna be a little bit, first time in twenty-three years I'm.
Not on there.
Not on the list, so.
You wanna be on there, Steve?
It's good news, because Steve, it sounded kinda like he wanted to be on there. I think it's good news, I don't know.
Any comments? Call in favor?
Aye.
J two-four, resolution fourteen fifteen forty-five of the Board of Education of the Pedaluma City Elementary and Joint Union School Districts of Sonoma County, State of California, requesting fund transfer under article, I think I can still read those, sixteen, section six of the state constitution. Steve, you wanna?
Well, this is a routine transfer that we have, that every district does it every year, so that we can make the transfers necessarily close the books.
Any questions, comments? Call in favor?
Aye.
Okay. J two-five, resolution fourteen fifteen dash four-six of the Board of Education of the Pedaluma Joint Union High School District of the County of Sonoma, State of California, for California State Teachers Retirement System pre-tax receivable. Second. Steve?
Ray, you wanna address this one, if you want?
Well, Dan and I are like very confused, because.
The situation is that we pay our.
No, this is like totally different.
Pre-tax. And my, when we're adding the new sixth grade, or the seventh grade accelerated charter at McKinley Elementary School, we have to pass this resolution so that they can as well.
Oh, okay. Got it. So then you get them in there.
So, no, basically, you pay your STIRS pre-tax, so it increases how much you pay in taxes, now actually increases how much you pay in taxes once you retire.
So it's like you.
Presumably.
Yeah. That's what it is. Sure.
No questions? Okay. Call in favor?
Aye.
So moving right along, we'll go to J two-five, resolution fourteen fifteen dash forty-six of the Board of Education of the Pedaluma Joint Union High School District of the County of Sonoma, State of California, for California State Teachers Retirement System pre-tax receivable. Did you? Did I do J two-four? Oh, I'm sorry, J two-six. I gotta check that one off. Going back.
I was thinking it was elementary.
No, I was thinking it was elementary and then high school. J two-six, memorandum of understanding, with Old Adobe Union School District provide a point four full-time equivalent FTE teacher to Pedaluma City Schools for music services.
So they've been having trouble hiring a music teacher. Oh, I'm sorry.
We moved to second. Yeah, we're just.
I got the two.
So they've been having trouble hiring a music teacher because everybody wants full-time, so they asked us if we would like to go with them on an M O V where they, they will together make a one-point-o. I believe that we're point four and they're gonna provide the point six.
And this is for elementary?
Yes, Old Adobe, yeah.
Yeah, but for our elementary.
Ours will be secondary.
Okay.
Junior high?
Okay, yeah, okay.
Did we have someone retired?
Preston.
Preston.
So.
So.
We had Elizabeth.
Elizabeth retired. Elizabeth retired. Elementary, we actually have, elementary, we actually have two elementary music teachers leave us, one retired, one moved on. And then with Preston moving, we had a music teacher that had rights to a one-point-o, a full-time music position at Kennewithen. We did not have the music provided, you know, to, to offer him, so he has moved over to Pedaluma Junior, and we are now working with Old Adobe to get a full-time position, so it could be a junior high for us.
So is this a net loss gain or push on the music teacher?
It's pretty much a push. No, we're. We'll be down, we'll be down two sections of music. Yeah, because of the retirement, it ended up a push, but yeah, it's, overall, it's been a loss. And we're hoping to work with Old Adobe to reinvigorate that side of town of music.
So that there's more demand than the junior high?
At the junior high.
Right.
That's, yes, yes, and there, yes, and then it'll move on.
Does Wal have a music program there? After-school, yeah, because I remember we had.
Kevin, Kevin was providing their after-school music program, if you remember from Eastside.
Yes, yes.
Eastside Music. He was the lead for the Wal band.
So, you know what they're doing? Because we have to make sure that.
Well. Right. They still could be contracting with Kevin for after-school because it's after his hours for our district, so.
And he would have to go there.
He would have to go there from.
After, yeah, after.
Pro-Pedaluma.
Here.
Pro-Pedaluma.
All right, and then do we have to hire the elementary level music teachers?
We are in the process of hiring two music teachers at the elementary level, yes. And in elementary, two of them are paid for out of partial tax, two of them are paid for out of general funds.
Are that K through six, or just one through six?
Kate.
TK through six.
Yeah.
There's some music, there's some singing, I think Kate and Katie love that.
Yeah.
Joy's kids.
We are working on expanding time in elementary, so next year the kids TK through K and K will get thirty minutes. And hopefully in most schools that, one of the third grade students will get forty-five minutes, and the four through six kids will all get one hour, so we're extending time. That's an increase.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Call in favor?
Aye.
Next, K two-seven, agreement authorization with L A C O Associates for Special Inspection Materials Testing Service for the Casa Grande High School New Athletic Facility Project in the amount of seventeen thousand, eight hundred and twenty-five dollars via secondary bond funds.
Move.
Second.
So when you're doing a construction project, there's a lot of testing that's required by outside services, and this is to provide some of that testing on Casa Grande Athletic Field and, you know, restroom facilities.
Just out of curiosity, because you know, this is always something that just annoys me, what are we testing for, I mean, give me an example of it.
For instance, wells, yeah, for instance, wells and everything else have to be tested by, to make sure that they're.
A third-party.
The racks, right?
Yes.
Like they needed to on the Bay Bridge?
Yeah.
Well, I'm sure that we paid for it too.
Yeah, they probably had that done at the Bay Bridge and it just didn't, and it failed anyway, because it wasn't done properly, but that's why you have third-party people testing to make sure it is done properly and up to the specifications.
How's the project going?
Well, two days after we had the graduation ceremony, the field was totally gone, and the restroom facilities. So they're off to a very good start, now they just have to complete the project by middle of October.
So this is a new name, I don't recall that name.
We are starting to use them for inspection services. The next one's gonna be a new name to us as well.
That's what I'm saying, the second one's a new name as well.
Now are we.
Getting any kind of.
We're shopping around a little bit maybe? Well, we're shopping around, but we're shopping around for, when we get to the next one, DSA inspectors, because there's none available. And we had to go to East Bay to find this gentleman, and he's gonna do this plus another project, become forty-four.
Is it, is it, is it a set fee, is it, in other words, does the state set the fee, or it could be five hundred an hour, it could be a hundred and an hour?
Correct. This one, I believe, on the contract, it's a hundred and five dollars an hour, so it ranges from eighty to a hundred and five dollars an hour, which is a market price per record. And the people that we've used in the past, one of them, it's only in summer projects, this project's open in October, if that interests him. The DSA will look at their body of work and say, you can't take on any more jobs, this, these are all the projects you can inspect. Our two other DSA inspectors that we use are at that level, where they can't propose to do any more work for us because DSA says your plate's full. This gentleman had some availability, and he was familiar to counterpoint not us. And they went out and searched people they knew elsewhere and brought him to our projects, that's the next item.
But these guys are qualified through the state for these projects.
They have to test and be authorized by DSA to be an inspector.
Right. And it's mandated that we have the test.
And you have to have a DSA inspector for every DSA project.
Why do I feel like these are all retired DSA?
And they're, and they're not, I'm not sure, none of them are, but none that I know of, I mean, they're architects for contractors.
The systemic way this is done is, I just have always pretended to matter from.
Like there's, Troy, just like there's a artificial layer in there.
Yeah. This is one of those additional costs of school district construction.
But you're out there trying to minimize costs, you're going a couple different places, and you're investing camp.
Yes.
On something.
Going out and searching for.
That's all we ask you to do, Steve, that's all we hear.
Yeah, for one more day.
Well, Joe's on top of it. Joe and Justin, the counterpoint, are on top of this.
Okay.
Any other comments?
No.
Call in favor?
Aye.
Next item, K two-eight or J two-eight, agreement ratification with Romer Panaguidin for DSA project inspection services for the Casa Grande High School New Athletic Facility Project in the amount of eighty-six thousand, nine hundred and forty dollars via secondary bond funds.
This is what I was speaking to.
Anything you would add, any questions, same skinny?
Yep.
This is semi-general disgust.
This is, this is the field where.
Let the record reflect, Troy has a general disgust.
Yeah. Eighty-six thousand, eighty-seven thousand dollars to inspect.
Price and demand, a field.
No, add those two together, tell me where.
Yeah.
Over a hundred thousand dollars to inspect by state mandate.
Yep.
By contractors.
Of course we want it done right, but still.
Well, it wasn't done right.
But I'm feeling like the addition I had done on my house might be not up to code, because I never hired any of these people to help me check on the contractor.
Well.
I just sort of assume.
The city, city.
Man, I sleep tonight.
Inspector, inspector should have came and inspected your project.
Yeah.
DSA didn't charge independently.
Yeah, I agree with Troy.
I totally agree with you.
Any, any other comments?
No.
To issue, okay. Call in favor?
Aye.
Okay. J two-nine, award bid and change order authorization, bid number zero-one dash fifteen, Casa Grande High School covered walkway project at T McFarlane, Inc., D B A, Bay West Construction, in the amount of ninety-seven thousand dollars via secondary capital facility funds, and the interim chief business official to approve change orders up to ten percent, except work as being complete. Move.
Second.
Discussion?
So remember we put in the new modular buildings, and we're extending the walkway that exists out to cover the classrooms.
This is the construction cost, isn't it about the same as the inspection cost that we approved last week or the week before? It just seemed like it was an outrageous amount.
Now you're just trying to.
Now you're trying to get. Troy's blood pressure is one forty ever.
So this is the, this is the bid, we just opened the bid recently.
This is just the construction. This is just the construction.
Construction part. Well, last week we approved the architectural cost.
Oh, it was the architect, okay.
And we negotiated for a long time with the architect because of separating the two projects, and we negotiated their feet down, last week we approved it last time.
Okay.
This is the construction.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Here's Ivan, sorry.
These are capital facilities funds, so this is using developer fees.
Note to self, only use architects who absorb DSA costs.
We have to find that.
Yeah.
Or you can just look for umbrellas.
Yeah, that's right. All right, any other comments? Call in favor?
Aye.
Moving on, two point ten, real property purchase authorization, let the board approve the real property purchase and sale agreement between the Pedaluma Joint Union High School District and the First Baptist Church of Pedaluma, in the amount of one point five million dollars via secondary bond funds. Actually, to something tangible.
Yes, so. So again, this is on the church right of Pedaluma Junior High Campus, and as the board's well aware, we've been negotiating for this property for a significant amount of time, and finally have reached a purchase agreement, where the purchase of the site does have contingency language, so we're now gonna have consultants go in, review the site, make sure that we can bring the existing classroom facilities on the campus, DSA standards that are reasonable, down with the, down with the church, and that the rest of the site is going to be available for the district's future consideration.
Yeah, we're not gonna open a church.
Just saying. Not opening a church.
Yes. Any questions or comments?
This is bond.
This is secondary bond. And it was in, it was part, it was stated items where we locate the crossroads within the bond.
Yeah. So that's a possibility, of course, out in law.
Your bond dollars are working.
Anybody, Troy, have a question or comments?
So is it like a ninety-day?
Mary?
I think you have a hundred and forty, because there's a lot, there's a lot of contingencies and a lot of exploration that we have to do.
And we can buy an extension, I saw there. I had a couple of questions, Steve, and maybe you know, maybe you don't, because I take this was vetted by our legal.
Yeah, this was, that's where College Legal drafted it and working with their legal counsel.
And their, the sellers are represented, it looks like, by Earl Petrikowski?
Correct.
Who I know is a.
Real estate attorney.
Very competent real estate attorney.
Yes.
So I have two questions, one is, I didn't see any attorney's fees. I saw a liquidated damage, which means we can back out at any time for some specific, meaning we leave our deposit.
Deposit.
In the deal, which is a good offer.
Yes.
But if you flip that around, and they don't follow through for some reason, usually in these kind of agreements, you see a specific performance clause and attorney's fees clause, meaning land is specific and unique. The hypothetical would be, someone comes along and offers them two point five million, so they reach a deal with us, so to them, we have the right to go to court and specifically enforce this particular comment, we don't just get a million extra dollars or anything, we, we get the property, because that's what we want. Or it's specific and unique, so was that addressed at all, do you know, or?
No, I mean, I have to admit, I've not seen in previous purchase agreements that we've had for purchase of properties either. But, you know, we would obviously take action to enforce our.
Well, you take action, but if the property's sold, it's sold. So the point is, if it's a third-party that knows about this agreement, good luck. So I think that's something that needs to be addressed, quite frankly, to protect the district's interest. I know we want to move on this, so it may be something just. want to move on this, so it may be something just, and I doubt that either attorney would have a problem with it, it's fairly standard in real estate purchase contracts, but I was just questioning whether there was a reason.
Not that I'm, not that I'm aware of, I mean, I wasn't part of the negotiations between the attorneys and the bond, and I have been working with our counsel on the purchase.
Can we approve a contract with the provision that our attorneys, the attorney's agreed to that, or do we have to approve the actual contract?
No, you can, you can stipulate modification to a two-day agreement.
So propose.
So Ray will have to take that, that modification to Patrick and work out the details.
Okay, I would propose that we approve this with our attorney putting in a specific performance, a specific performance and attorney's fees clause.
Okay.
I would amend my motion to include that.
And a second?
I think it was Sherry's second.
Yeah, Sherry.
Second.
Okay, so as I amended, all in favor?
Aye.
Alright, thank you. Good Lord, you're the three.
Free. So moving on, 2.11 Budget Adoption Authorization for 2015-2016.
So.
Do we hear it?
I was gonna tease and say I was gonna make questions out.
Any comments from this, from the board?
No.
Public comment, do we have any public comment on that item?
Barry.
There being no public comment, no further comment from the board, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, Ray. Moving on, Educational Services, 3.1, 2015-2016 Local Control and Accountability Plan of LCAP Adoption Authorization.
We reviewed the LCAP last week, we have had no public comment over the course of the week, so only changes that have been made are some additional things that Sonoma County Office of Ed has asked for, we made those changes and we're ready to go.
So you didn't have a bunch of written responses, Steve?
No, I didn't have a lot of people writing for verification responses, like them.
You had none.
No, we did.
Okay.
Okay, any board comment or questions? Any public comment on this particular matter?
Going, going.
Once, gone twice, okay, there being no public comment, all in favor?
Aye.
Alright.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Discussion Information, Administration, Human Resources, any? Business Services? Educational Services? Future Business? Signing of Papers? And one last piece of business before we close, someone told me our superintendent was leaving, so Steve?
Jane.
You will be our last action item. Congratulations on, best wishes on your retirement.
Something I can open from.
Yes, you can open my hands.
It's not that I own Russ's board, but I know better than you.
Probably save the district some money on wrapping paper. On behalf of the board, Steve, I just wanted to let you know, we really appreciate you and all that you've done for this district. Any comments from the, from the board?
In many ways, not just the superintendent, but everything, always.
Steve Fulman, thank you for 23 years of service to Pedaluma City Schools Community, 1992 to 2015. Thank you, that's great. And thanks for the nice part two.
Yeah, we're ready, yeah, don't thank us.
Yeah, I did turn to the insights part, so I gotta.
I'll get back, I'll get back.
Steve, all good and all heartfelt, and again, we really truly appreciate all that you've done, and you've served our community and served well.
And I'd like to say that those watching at home probably don't know that despite the fact that he's a numbers guy, every decision he made was about what was best for kids, so just wanna make sure everybody knows that.
Thank you, and it's been a pleasure working for this board and this community, this community supports us in what we do and is very noticeable, and, you know, the board's always been there for all students and that's, that's unique and very much appreciated, so thank you.
It's gonna be weird without you. You gotta come back and heckle us. And Ron, yeah, you guys could play, Ron and Steve are gonna be in the back row. Having questions, Steve?
And since we're talking about people leaving us.
Yeah.
Remember, if you come up and stand up here, we're gonna tell you what we think of you.
I'm not sure.
I want the final one.
Okay, Troy, give us the final page.
Right, thank you, Ron, you've always been a pleasure to work with and answer all my questions, do a nice job with all our employees, so thank you.
Thank you.
Nice retirement, back on business.
Mary?
And I would like to thank you for your always positive attitude, you're always smiling and happy when he has something to present to us.
Sherry?
Echo, like both of the gals I've said so far, I really appreciate, anytime I had a question, you were very thoughtful in explaining things and responding and timely and always, I always knew that I could kind of ask anything when you were there, so thank you.
Quite agree with it, Ron, you're always positive, professional, prepared, but I really enjoy the levity that you brought sometimes to some very serious matters, so appreciate how, what I want to say, understanding you were about some rather rudimentary questions that we sometimes ask, which I know for a 30-year seasoned pro is, you know, second nature, but for us sometimes, you know, needed the explanation and needed to slow it down a little bit, so you did a great job of explaining and being responsive, so I appreciate that. So now, the last word, I.
I don't know if I'm gonna cap it or brace it, I'd like to know after he says it. No, I just wanna thank you because for the last eight or nine, or whatever years it is, you've been like a great educator for both the Casa Grande here, the human resources piece, quite honestly, is one of the most, from this side of the fence, frustrating, confusing, I'm not gonna say madly, but just how it all works, we come from the private sector, as we say, and you've always been nothing but patient, explaining to us, because we're all about how it works, so you dealt with some pretty tough things, and we really appreciate the fact that you're always with us, standing first in the jar, honest, straightforward, tells us the way it is, pulled our hand when we cried a little bit over it, and educated us on how to do our job, so thank you.
It's actually been, it's been great, it's been a great run, 28 years in various roles here, and really in human resources, it's been a challenge every once in a while, you know, behind those doors there, we've seen a few things, but mostly just enjoy the time, it's great working with great people, I will echo what, you know, has been said, it's always been clear that you're doing what's best for kids, and, you know, that's all that those of us who are educators are gonna ask for and for, so I appreciate everything that you do, and it has been, it's been tremendous, I'll say bittersweet, there's a lot of things I will miss, you know, so, so thank you for everything.
Ron, we'll miss you, enjoy your retirement.
Yes.